Mic's on. All right. Good evening and welcome to the Southwest Lincoln Local Board of Education Special Meeting on November fifteenth. I would like to call this meeting to order, and I do need to read the meeting notice. Pursuant to Ohio Revised Code one-two-one-point-two-two and three-three-one-three-point-one-six, notice is hereby given that a special meeting of the Southwest Lincoln Local Board of Education Fairfield and Lincoln Counties is scheduled to be held on Monday, November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one at seven P. M. The meeting will be held in the Southwest Lincoln Local School District Board Meeting Room, twenty-nine-two-seven-B, South Street, Pataskoala, Ohio. The purpose of the meeting will be presentations, requests to speak on agenda items, approval of minutes, financial consent calendar, personnel consent calendar, business items, treasures items, and superintendent's items. And I'd also like to thank all of our visitors here tonight and our visitors watching at home. Thank you, and if you all would please join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance.
This is Ms. Held's kindergarten class from Kirkersville Elementary.
Our pleasure to meet you, to the class of the United States of America, and to be welcomed with our richest hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome, thank you. All right, Mr. Jones, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Engel.
Here.
Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mrs. Spindler.
Here.
Mr. Ziney.
Here.
Mr. Vincent.
Here, a quorum is present. We will continue. I need an adoption of the agenda, please.
Some moved second.
Discussion, Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mr. Ziney.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes, the agenda is approved. We'll move on to presentations. We have Aetna, Kirkersville, Pataskoala Elementary Schools' Continuous Improvement Plan. Welcome, and thanks for coming out tonight, folks.
Thanks for having us. We're doing this a little bit unique this year, since we were grade banded.
So make sure it's, yeah.
So since we were grade banded, previous, last year, we're gonna do it all together this year, and then next year, we'll go by each individual school. So we'll start off, if you look to the top left there, that's our K-three readiness score. If we, those are the students that we moved from off-track to on-track, and one unique thing I just want to point out real quick there is that first grade test score. It's interesting how that one's a little bit lower than the other ones. That is done with our MAP test that we previously have been using, and that test, when you go from first to second, goes from reading the test to you, to you reading it on your own. So we have a little bit to work on there, and we are gonna get that, get that fixed, especially with the STAR test now. So that was just one unique thing I wanted to point out. Also, in the middle there, continuing on with that, that's our current percentages. And if you'll notice, each of the buildings is listed there, Aetna, Kirkersville, and Pataskoala, for each grade level. So those are from our first round of STAR tests. That's kind of our projections for this coming year. Now, we will take this test three times, again, in January, and then at the end of the year, so hopefully, we're gonna keep moving those scores right along.
Our goals at this point will be to increase our on-track percentage to eighty percent for the two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two school year, with the minimum increase from the off-track to on-track by ten percent. And what I mean by that is in second grade, last year, it was thirty-five percent of the off-track, we moved on-track. This year, we're focusing on making it forty-five percent. And then students identified as gifted will maintain or exceed individual percentage ranking on STAR from the fall to spring, and what that means, so a student falls in the ninety-seventh percentile, they will remain in the ninety-seventh percentile or move forward by the end of the year.
And the strategies that we are going to focus on to meet our SMART goals include the MTSS, Multi-Tiered System of Support, which you probably know as the RTI process, specifically guided reading groups, title reading, and co-teaching. Literacy support, we're going to focus on our research-based computer program, Lexia, ensuring that our students get the minimum amount of time required for them to gain the units that they need to, to move on to different levels. And then focusing on those foundational reading skills, specifically a strong tier-one instruction with our Haggerty and foundations and our dyslexia screening that we give students throughout the year, you know, to see progress as we go. And the big thing with those, we think, are, you know, ensuring those daily with fidelity checks to make sure that we're really using our data to drive instruction.
Now, we're gonna measure those, again, through that STAR test, as well as some of our Lexia data that we give throughout the course of the year. Those are just down there at the bottom. We established that kind of baseline score here in the fall, and then there's a winner's score, so we're looking to, obviously, want all students to meet that winner expectation, and then all of them, again, to meet that spring expectation as well. So on the top side there, that talks about our student achievement, so that's kind of our test scores from last year, the third graders there up to the top. We had sixty-four percent passage of the E.L.A. and seventy-four percent of the math. Right below that, you'll see our projected scores, again, just from our first STAR test that we just took. We have, each of those buildings are listed there, and what I like about this is, I feel like we're in pretty good shape for the start of the year. So we want to really get them up. As you'll see here, Ms. Cottrell's gonna talk about how we're gonna close that gap a little bit each time, but I feel like we're in a good spot moving forward.
So what we would like to do here is have achievement of an eighty percent passing rate for reading and math for the third grade O.S.T. This is the standard set by the state, so we want to reach that standard. Based on the STAR assessment, again, we're gonna reach for eighty percent of all students K-two will be on-track at the end of the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
And the strategies for our student achievement target areas, using our research-based math curriculum, which is Bridges, using all the components with that daily, and with Fidelity, and then our literacy collaborative framework, specifically targeting guiding reading groups with Fidelity, and again, using data to make sure that we're fluidly providing that targeted intervention for students.
And as we're progress monitoring down there at the bottom, we just recently took our first round of the third grade reading. That data should be coming back here. Hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to look at that. And then, again, we're looking for that eighty percent goal in the spring. That's what we're really looking for. And then STAR testing there, again, we are about fifty-three percent average. We want to move that to sixty-seven in the mid-year, and then eighty percent, again, at the end of the year, to meet that state, state expectation. So that's kind of our, our plan for the year. Any questions, anything that we can answer for?
Appears to be a robust plan. I like it.
Hey, we're working hard. Teachers are doing a great job. It's great to have the kids back with us and doing those small groups, all those good things that we see successful.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, request to speak on agenda items, Teamsters? Southwest Lincoln Education Association? All right, we need to move on to approval of minutes. I believe we can take both of them?
I'd like to move approval of four A and B, and in doing so, I'd also like to offer an apology to Mr. Vincent and board for my portion of the debacle of the last two meetings. So I would just like to offer that, and I know that there were quite a few things outside of the meeting I was accused of, but for things in the meeting, I would just like to offer my intensity of emotions and frustrations to you all, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Okay, Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Ziney.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes, minutes are approved. Let's move on to financial report.
Motion approval five A.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Jones.
You had the executive summary for October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Fairly routine month. Income tax came in lower than we expected. So that was a little thing we had to keep an eye on, so it was a little bit lower. Then state sources are lower, but also are all other, you know, basically with the new school funding foundation formula. How they treat open enrollment, it's supposed to be funded outside the school districts by the state, while they're still taken out of our school foundation settlements. So we're supposed to treat that as a reduction to our receipts, but we've always posted expenditure. So this month, I had to go back to July and fix all that, and took the ones that I posted as an expenditure and moved it up to a reduction to the receipts column. So net effect is zero, but it does reduce receipts and does reduce expenditure. So like, we're farther off than we really are, so. That was kind of thing that's unique. So we'll keep an eye on the income tax, and then hopefully, once the new school foundation form that comes in, we'll get a better idea where we're gonna, you know, what kind of state revenue we're gonna get, so.
When is that projected?
What's that?
The enrollment?
How much we're getting?
The, the formula and everything, when is that?
Right now, it's projected for to be zero this year, flat, but hoping with the new enrollment, it'll increase, so. That's one, kind of the one bad thing for us this first year. If it's fully funded, you're supposed to get about two million dollars more a year. But this first year, we're flat-lined, basically, so. Again, we'll see when the new form that comes through, take our new enrollment into account.
When is the new formula gonna come through?
December, supposedly, probably second payment in December is when we're supposed to see it.
Okay.
I have no idea what that number is.
No. Nobody does, nobody does. You know, so, and what's really hard to get to find forecasts is, there's gonna be a lot more revenue that's restricted in use, so. What was previously, this is unrestricted, now English Language Arts, Gifted, D.P.I.A., there's a lot of things that are gonna be shown now, it's gotta be restricted, and we gotta track those expenditures even more specific. So it's, again, state maybe give us more money, but again, they're tying up their hands, saying you cannot use it, you can only use it this way.
What are they looking for? Do you know?
I don't know.
Just control.
Control. I mean, I have no, we'd spend it the way we're supposed to spend it, so I don't, it's gonna be a problem, but still, it's gonna be, you know, you have to make sure they're gonna start to do more reporting requirements, to make sure we're spending it the way we're supposed to be spending it, and.
Par for the course, the state is placing administrative burden on districts.
Administrative burden, and, you know, this is first time, we're not getting much money, and we gotta do more work, so.
Any idea why the income tax was so much lower?
The two things I saw, the, you know, there's like four different parts of the income tax. There's like amounts with health me check, and there's amounts that basically people pay, and there's like estimated, estimated income, so they pay those every quarter. Well, that number, estimated income, was really low.
Okay.
And then the other part of it was refunds were a lot higher, so that comes in with a kind of average amount. So I think that was the largest part, you know, trying to estimate how much income somebody's gonna have as a school district is kind of hard. So we kind of looked in the past, but this time, it came in quite a bit lower, those two things. Estimated revenue was lower, estimated income tax was lower, and refunds were higher, so that all affected the income tax.
And have we seen it that lower before?
That one line line fluctuates tremendously. And that's what's so hard about that thing. It's, you know, it's, it's not a huge part. Obviously, withholding from paychecks is the largest, but this one still has a major effect on it, if it can, so. You know, we look at those, we looked, we look at the history, last ten years, where we think it's gonna be adding, it come in lower. Plus, last year was an odd year, too, with delaying the income tax settlements until October, and I think that kind of all threw it. You know, even though it was, it was low, it was like nine percent lower. January was a lot higher, so we're only about three-point-eight percent lower than we anticipated at this time, so we'll keep an eye on it as we go. Obviously, we got two more settlements come in, one again in January, one in April. Hopefully, they'll bring us back. But that three-point-eight, I have about a five-point-seven percent increase projected, so. You know, so even at three-eight, we're still over what we got last year, so.
Then expenditures for fuel, have we, was that significantly higher with the higher gas prices, or was that kind of par for the course?
Pre-par, I mean, I haven't seen the much, I don't see, I haven't seen the bills lately to see exactly, but, you know, we get, they've changed some things on it, but yeah, as prices go up, you'll see fuel costs go up with this.
Just curious.
R.D.C. right here, it says electric was a significant expenditure this month?
Yeah.
Is that, like, higher than normal?
It's a little bit, new high school, it's a little bit more expensive than the, the old high school. It's, you know, right now, Aetna's down, and the old high school's down, so. But it's, it's quite a bit bigger building. It's, you know, it's about ninety thousand square feet more, so it's.
I assume that the forecast, we are adjusting for that.
Yeah, some, and then also, the board approved last time that new powerful schools, which should bring the rate down a little bit. Paying a little bit higher rate right now. That should help in the future, too, but. We will see a bigger increase, because we'll build new buildings, even though they're more efficient, they still use electricity, so.
All right, any other questions? Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Ziney.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes, that's approved. We move on to the personnel consent calendar.
Motion to approve six A through I.
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
I just wanted to share the M.O.U. with Sweet, is, is based on teachers covering classes during their lunch, giving up their lunch. So it's something we've been doing, but really, by law, in O.R.C., they're required to have a lunch, so this allows us to, contractually, to let them sub if they want to. So we appreciate working with the union on that.
You want to mention the first batch of new subs?
Oh, yeah, I could do that, too, and, um, let's see here, we have our first four, I believe it is. And I'm gonna talk about, a little bit more about this later, but our first four subs actually being approved, our non-agreed subs have gone through the training already. They came to job fair, signed up for a training that same week, have done, done their licensure, their background check, and they are ready to go. So we are really excited to have them, and after tonight, they can start, so.
I heard from people outside in the community that we did a good move on changing the rates for our subs, and they said, you guys are, that's gonna work out well for you. Let's hope, until everybody else does the same.
Right.
Yeah, that's meant to be true. Our fill rates have been a little bit higher since then. I mean, it's, it's hard to get to kind of look every day, depending on how many people you have out, too, but we have had some more, and I do think this is also going to help immensely, so it's pretty exciting as well.
Are we the first in Lincoln County to add Senate Bill One subs?
So last year, Heath had, they allowed us to do last year, we didn't do it last year. Heath did it last year.
Okay.
But I do not believe anybody else in the county has, because actually, I had shared with the superintendents what we had done at our job fair, as well as the training, and a lot have reached out to ask for information for our job fair. One of the coordinators messaged me directly today and said, how did that work out for you? Did you get a lot of people, so?
We're not talking. We're keeping them.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, no, I don't know for sure, because I'm not, I'm hosting the job fair, Tanya's doing it with the coaches, but I believe most people, if not all, and she could probably tell you, are, are, are community members, so I think they're gonna wanna stay here. I feel confident about that, but I haven't shared our sub prices that I, they haven't asked. If they ask me, of course, I'm going to share, but nobody's asked me that yet, so.
They'll find out.
Yeah, I mean, they will, you're right, but I haven't, I haven't outwardly shared that yet, so. So that's it for that.
As you can see, these first four are really contingent, because they're coming before you actually approve the resolution.
Yeah, they have a little one on.
So they made their hiring contingent on you approving that resolution, so.
Okay. Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Ziney.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes, that's approved. We move on to personnel seven A. Approval of volunteer.
Motion to approve seven A.
I'll second that. Costa Jones.
I've heard stories.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel. Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Ziney.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. We move on to business items. I think we could probably.
Could take A through E if you really wanted to.
Okay. A through E.
Motion approval A through E, second.
So, can we, oh, not yet, sorry.
All right.
Can we start discussing?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so the, the policy for the first reading, so in, if you recall, and if you look at the policy, last year, actually, the last two years during COVID, they recommended the change to removing the grades for extracurricular activities, and so we went ahead and adopted that. So currently, obviously, that's back in place, our GPA status, as well as the five credits that's always required by Ohio High School. So I'm asking tonight that you consider to vote for this policy, and then also to put it in place prior to the second reading. What they're asking for is that we're noticing, we have, not, not a ton, so we're not gonna use that word, but we have athletes who have been quarantined multiple times, some up to three times, the first nine weeks, which has obviously impacted grades. Everybody has their five classes of eligibility per Ohio High School. But with the change in the quarantine requirements, which now allow kids to come to school with the mask and not fall behind, we shouldn't see this issue moving forward, but we'd like to not penalize those kids who may be a little bit behind. So we'd like to alter for the first nine weeks only, follow Ohio High School's five credits, and then go back the second nine weeks, now that the quarantining has changed, and to allow kids to have to follow both the GPA and the course requirements per Ohio High School. So that's what I'm asking for you to consider tonight.
So it's temporary, just for the first nine weeks?
It's just for the first nine weeks because of the quarantining.
Okay.
And that's what we're finding when they looked at those kids. Some had been out two, three times for quarantining.
And the one-point-five GPA that's set by Ohio High School?
That's set by us.
Us, yeah.
Ohio High School's the five, the five classes, totally. So we'd still be meeting the requirements set for our, Ohio High School. We just wouldn't be doing the above and beyond that we have, and then we would go back to that next quarter. I do not remember. Do you remember, Tan?
Yeah, we were.
Yeah, we were.
Probably, I wanna say maybe four or five.
Is that unreasonable?
That's one point's philosophy. I mean, I wouldn't think it's unreasonable, but. I mean, one point, I've seen it as low as one-point-oh in different districts, I've seen it as high as two-point-oh. And I think we just kind of, we went with the one-five as, as the in-between.
Do you recall why it was lowered to one-five?
That I don't remember.
I don't remember either. I mean, it probably is very reasonable, but a lot of these kids really need some sort of activity, and they're likely to keep them in school, so. That'd be my two cents.
I think a lot of the coaches, most of the coaches, if I'm not mistaken, have their own set of rules as well, even if they get, like, low, under two, they recommend, like, tutoring and different things.
Study tables and.
Yeah.
It is a small percentage, but it would help that small percentage of kids for this current season.
And this is just our first reading, though, correct?
Well, it's also, but it's also a temporary put-in-place.
Sorry.
Because seasons started this week.
I'm assuming for winter sports.
Yeah, for winter sports, eligibility to start.
Because this always goes back to the previous nine weeks for the current season, right? So that season is, for most, started this week, I think.
Yeah.
All right. Any more discussion?
Second policy, just to, yeah, just, you know, changes. Senate Bill One, do you want to?
Yeah, so Senate Bill One is just allowing our subs teachers, teachers to be hired, you know, without having the bachelor's degree, so.
Not just for the school year only, right, yeah?
Yeah, for the school year only. I mean, it would be ideal if they continued, if it works out really well, and people are having success and able to cover. I mean, again, I wasn't at the training on Friday, but Tanya said it was a pretty impressive group of people for the first round, so.
And those teachers probably would not be taking long-term positions, right?
That's correct.
A day-to-day type thing, okay.
Correct. And then the Rico, are there any questions on the Senate Bill One? The Rico copiers, and Rick can also speak to this, but we have been having a lot of problems with our copiers, and a lot of teacher.
I hear about it every night.
Yeah, a lot of teacher frustration. So we're, we're going to purchase some new, there, our old ones are, what, four, is it four years old?
About four years old, yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, there are days, and I mean, more days than not, that every copier is broken down in a building, and then we're constantly calling repair. It's, it's ridiculous. So anyhow, this is to purchase new, more efficient copiers. Jeff worked on this with Rick and, and myself and others to, we used to have Rico, so hopefully, they'll be better, work better.
Do we have warranty kind of whatever on them?
Yeah, they have maintenance agreements, yeah.
Okay, problem.
Uh, this one's guaranteed for three years. The rate is guaranteed for three years. It could be a five-year agreement, but it's guaranteed. You wanna say anything?
I mean, I did the research on these, so basically, what I was looking for was something that was gonna be more reliable and a bit more robust than the ones we have right now. These definitely seem to fall in that category. I was also trying not to break the bank. So we are putting in two that are considered copy center, copy center quality. One will go in the high school, one will go in the middle school. Those are our two highest-level buildings by numbers. Everyone else is getting ones that are right below copy center quality, so. These definitely should have a better time of handling our workflows and the occasional less-than-gentle treatment the copiers get. The Xerox ones seem to be just, Xerox literally built them so they could actually win government bids. They're just.
Really?
They're very cheap, like, as, as Mr. Dr. Perkins said, they break down constantly. They just gave our high school two brand-new ones. I would say within the first three weeks, both of them were broken again, so.
Wow.
Yeah, and since I'm the one that did all the research on these, I'm, I really wanted to make sure we have something good, since there's only one finger pointing this time around, so. Any questions specifically?
And then we have the softball trip. Not to put Coach Delson on the spot, but do you wanna, do you wanna come up and talk about it? Tell them what you're gonna do, what you hope to do. I mean, you're here, so you might as well come join us.
If you guys have any questions. So I've always, every year, the kids ask me to take them to just for a spring break trip. I've never been able to go, because our spring break has always been too early before I'm allowed to play games. So this year, our spring break's late enough that I'm able to play. So we put together a proposal to go to Cocoa Beach, Florida for a week. We'll leave Sunday night of spring break. On March twenty-seventh, we'll get to Florida around lunchtime on Monday. We'll play games Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Wednesday, I'm leaving up to my seniors, will be a Disney Day or Universal Day, whichever they want to do on that Wednesday. And we'll head home Saturday afternoon, Saturday evening. We'll get home sometime between nine and noon Sunday, the following Sunday. That's our plan. The trip is going to cost about thirty thousand dollars is the budget, is what it's gonna cost. Nine thousand roughly for the charter bus for the week, and that's the driver's tip, everything. It's about fifteen thousand for the hotel, for the week, plus our games, umpires, practices, and then it's about five thousand for Disney, Universal. It's gonna be about five thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars a ticket for forty-four, forty-five tickets. Somewhere in that ballpark of thirty thousand dollars is the budget. How are we paying for it? Well, we did two fundraisers that we've never done before. I told the girls, okay, we're gonna try this and see how it works. We did our camp over the summer. We had great success with the first camp we ever ran. I can't believe we had a hundred, one hundred and fifteen kids come to our camp. We made about seven thousand dollars, and I told the girls, a hundred percent of that money is for the trip. And then, with the boosters' help, we've got, participated with the State of Ohio, the, we got a bingo license. Took forever to get the bingo license, but we did submit and get a bingo license for the boosters. Now, the boosters will be able to use the bingo license for other things, but we submitted and got that approved. So we were going to host a bingo December eleventh, kind of like a purse bingo. I can't believe, like, one of my moms came to me and said this idea. I was like, you're crazy, there's no way people are gonna spend that much to come win a purse. And it was like, I guess I was wrong, because everybody's, everybody's selling all kinds of tickets. I'm like, who wants a thirty-five-hundred-dollar purse? I don't know, it doesn't do me any good, but. So anyways, we're gonna do that as a fundraiser, a hundred percent of that will be used. I'm projecting, we, I projected we'll make eight thousand from that event. By the sales of the tickets, from what I'm hearing, we might make more than that. My goal was two hundred people, but we might have closer to two-fifty people, two-fifty people show up, so we'll see how that goes. So hopefully, the cost is somewhere in that ballpark of four hundred and fifty dollars a kid. You know, I'm hoping that we can generate about fifteen thousand, and then fifteen thousand out-of-pocket, which is about four-fifty a kid, is what we're hoping to do. So that's our, that's our plan. If you guys have any questions about it, that's what we're hoping to be able to do. The only question I couldn't answer on there, so I'll have to get with Jake, because I filled out the form, is what are you gonna do in emergency, getting a kid home if something happens? So I haven't really got to that point yet, but I'll sit down with Jake, and we'll figure that out. Because if we're just on a charter bus, and somebody gets hurt or has to come home, and their parent's not there, Jake and I'll sit down and make a plan to address that if something were to happen in that situation, so.
Do we have a mechanism for, say, a family that might not be able to afford that, but their kid would be able to go?
All right, so we have, yes, well, yeah, so, and that four hundred and fifty dollars is, does not include lunch and dinner. So that third, twenty-nine thousand dollars roughly, the budget, is just breakfast. They're also gonna need money for lunch and dinner. I've had two businesses offer to give me a thousand-dollar donation, if I hung a banner. I said I can hang a banner for a thousand dollars. So I thought about just keeping that money as food money. You know, if needed, we'll be some extra money, I'll just keep as food money when we go down. You know, if needed, I'll give you some extra money. I'll just keep as food money when we go down. My thought, to answer your question, is if a kid comes to me and says, hey, Coach, I don't have the four hundred and fifty dollars. Um, I do have another fundraiser that I would give them, and I'm gonna tell, I, it works. I'm gonna just give them a, a, a calendar with thirty-one days on it. And I said, if you ask thirty-one people to buy a day on your calendar, and if it's day fifteen, they'll give you fifteen dollars. If it's day twenty, someone will give you twenty bucks. If you say, hey, I need money to go to Florida with the softball team, if you ask thirty-one people, I guarantee there's thirty-one people in the community that can help you out. If they, if they put a little bit of work in, I feel like they can uh, get the money. And I'm, I'm sure that, you know, I don't know if I can say this publicly, because I, if, if it's one or two kids that have an issue. I'm sure I have ways of financing one or two kids. If it ends up being seven, eight, nine kids. Yes, it's going to be harder. I can't, I can't support and take, cover nine or ten kids.
Okay.
So, my, my thought was we have an extra thing that we put on the side that I've talked to my coaches about. I feel like if a kid tries and really wants to do it, they can find a way to, there's enough people in the community that will help them out if they need be.
Awesome.
So that was, that was my thought there. So, any questions about it? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Yep.
Alright, any more discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Zini?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes. All of those pass. We'll move on to eight F. Discussion on property tax abatements and development and compensation agreements.
Do we have to like?
I think this is just a discussion.
This is a general discussion. This is not any one particular.
Cause I know we did eight, A through E. I didn't know if we had to do that separate.
No, it's just discussions always. No agenda, nothing to vote on, just informational. Really, the idea is to kind of get a philosophy again, you know, where, where we as a district are willing to accept abatements. We do have one on the table right now that we'll hope maybe to address after, beginning of the year, depending on how things work out, but um. You know, in the past, we've worked with that in township, um, on getting an abatement, and sometimes it's been struggling. And a lot of times I struggle deals around sharing of the jet income tax. As the one entity giving up the most property taxes, you know. We aren't necessarily getting reimbursed the most, anywhere close, so. Uh, one thing that Mrs. Moore asked me to look into was kind of like different levels of abatement. This is for the one ticker project, but just an overall general discussion about, you know, how much you're giving up property taxes on various levels of abatements. How that unabated portion affects school foundation, because that value does hit the school foundation formula, and there is a local share calculation that. So the more taxes or property value hits the books, the rolls, it makes us look basically richer per student. And the state says, oh, we'll give you less money. So, um, the biggest, really the biggest um, way we get revenue back is through the JEDs. The JEDZs in the beginning, and now the JEDs is the one way we get revenue back. And that's part that's always been a real big struggle, was trying to get something that we think's fair for the district. So the last couple was, we've been getting like thirty percent of the JED. Finally got township to agree back to where we were at the very beginning, get back to thirty percent. And that comes out of JED, and that's, and JED is basically a joint economic development district. And it's just people who work within it pay income tax, and that income tax distributed among very, various governmental entities.
Could you remind us again why we were below where we started from to begin with?
So the very first one, JEDZ one, we were at thirty percent. At that time, we were working well with township. And then JEDZ two came up, which is actually where Arizona, where Amazon is. At the time, we didn't know it was gonna be Amazon. You know, the township asked us to take a little bit less, and we went down to twenty-eight percent.
And why did the township want us to take less? Do we remember?
A lot of deals, that one I don't remember as much on the JEDZ two. I can say about basically the first JED, uh, which was per lodges, where we went down to twenty percent. We were asked to go lower because they had a lot of infrastructure costs and so forth. And they, at the time, we were working well with township, and Mr. Nell and I brought the recommendation to the board that we thought on temporary basis, on a project-by-project. We would help out township by taking less income tax in order to bring the projects in. Well, at that time, there was the assumption that we would continue to take that less income tax. So, it was a let, it was a less percentage per year, but the way it was set a little different with the two point two, five million dollars of kind of guaranteed amount. You know, so if it took fifteen years to get it, or if it took fifty years to get it, you'd get that amount of money. It just, I mean, the value of money goes down over time. Things get more expensive, it doesn't bring in, so. So we had two or three, probably four abatements that we took twenty percent, but then even the last twenty percent, we wanted to go back up to where we were with JEDZ one, which is the partnership we agreed to. So, I think the one, next one, we got twenty-five percent. And finally, the last, the last one, which was excellent, we got back up to thirty percent. And that's, we said we wanted, that's where we wanted to be at. So, you know, basically, even at thirty percent calculation, the school district's only getting made whole about thirty percent. Township's making about a hundred and ninety percent, a hundred and eighty percent, because we have a huge difference in our millage rates. We collect a lot more taxes, so it basically, it's, it's, that's a moneymaker for a township, and we're giving up a lot. So, we give up the most. The township gets the mo, second, the most, and then Lincoln County gets the second most reimbursement. And we're a real distant set, third. But it's hard when we have such a higher tax rate. You're talking about thirty-five mils versus maybe four mils, six mils. So it's, that disparity is there. So we look into, kind of look at, you know, what the value of the building is, what its tax rules, times our millage rate. You know, we can say this is the amount of tax we're giving up. It's a pretty easy calculation. You know, the income taxes usually range, depending on whether they're willing to share, and then basically, we know it's a two percent. You know, depending what, we can do the calculation fairly easy. But it's still estimates. You don't know, you know, like Amazon, when we first told it was fifteen hundred jobs. Now it's four thousand plus jobs, so the income taxes went way up. But again, all of these JEDs are time-limited. You know, based their fifteen-year JEDs, it hits tax, but, but most of these, um, these JEDs are basically thirty years, you know. It's worded not less than thirty years. You know, it'd be ideal if we stayed in longer than thirty years, but they're worded that way. There's some, so. This money will go away eventually, and that's one thing why we don't necessarily put in our general fund, because you don't want to go away and then.
Exactly.
Not know about, and all of a sudden you're a man two million dollars short. It's like, uh-oh. So we, you know, we set aside and we use it for various projects, technology and structural, and then also we've used it for contingency on our construction projects, so. It's been helpful that way, so. So I attach base and documentation to our calculations of different levels of abatement, different values, different tax, that's main income taxes. To kind of see, you know, what, where we're at. So, you know, for example, what we're getting now, a thirty percent JED. You know, for example, for a twenty-five million dollar investment, the school is giving up two point two million dollars in property taxes over fifteen years. This is not money we actually have or giving up. We've not collected this amount of money now. It's just money that we would, if the building came in without an abatement, what we would've gotten. But there is offset on school foundation, so. The calculation I did on the offset is based on two thousand nineteen school foundation formula, because last year we had its full school foundation formula. Because twenty and twenty-one, they just froze us at nineteen. There's no more formula in place, so. As we all know, the new formula was put in place with the new state budget. As we talked earlier, we just don't know where it's at. Next, I emailed somebody I know, State Department, Support Education, he said he can't help me. I just wanted property tax offset calculation. They said they can't do anything until it comes out, so um, these calculations are on an old formula. And I'd have to redo them again once the new foundation formula, to see if it's changed any. I think the concept's still fairly, kind of familiar to nineteen, so hopefully it doesn't change a lot. So no matter what, school is just gonna give, gives up the most property taxes. So there's just various calculations. Mrs. Moore also asked for things like the, the TIF. So most of our skip, most of our TIFs, we make sure it's non-school TIF. Basically, a TIF is, you know, as a farm, the land's worth a hundred dollars. Okay, when it goes to commercial industrial, it may jump up to a thousand dollars. That value, that nine hundred dollar increase is what's TIF, so basically, the property owner still makes those, it's called service payments. But that service payments go in special funds that use for, could be the offset cost for infrastructural changes to the site. You know, could be roads and sewer, water, whatever. The law kind of restricts on how it's supposed to be used. But it's supposed to, I think ideally benefit. Obviously, what's good for non-school TIF is we still get the amount of money that we would've gotten. Obviously, we're the ones giving up those taxes. If we didn't have a TIF, if, if they got homeset, they'd get a lot more money if we were, they were taking our money with it. But the way we set up, and that's how we set up with the same task is their non-school tests. We still get the same amount of money we would've got that was not a TIF in place, so. So anything else, like the county, the townships? That money is going into their, that TIF account, and then used on whatever purposes the resolution set forth for that. Uh, next thing was the NCA. I don't have a whole lot of experience in NCA's whatsoever, so that's just a community authority and. Personally, I don't see a benefit maybe over a, a construction project. I don't see a benefit over housing. Basically, it's a special community that the property owners agrees, which I think it was the, it was the housing complex. It would be the, probably the developer would agree to go into prior to building any houses. And they charge additional property tax, and when I don't foresee a school district doing something like that, and then having part of the district paying a higher property tax than other parts of the district. Then I don't know why they would ever vote for one of our levies. So, I don't see a lot of, but, you know, basically, I think that township is looking, setting something up, I think over maybe the Canal's property.
Well, yeah, they're gonna do it to the, they're gonna do it to the buildings.
Yeah, the building stuff, and then basically the property tax goes where, whatever, whatever millage rate they set up, that goes back to township to use, kind of like the JED revenue.
In addition to.
Yeah, it's in addition to the JED, yeah.
Right. Cause I remember having a conversation with Mr. O'Neill, Robert O'Neill, and I don't remember which JED it was. But he was trying to convince the trustees not to do the NCA, cause it was gonna be on, it, it'd make it harder for him to. Get somebody in there to sell the property, then it punishes your developer.
Right. Because basically, it's just, it's a property tax. They're paying a prop tax, trying to get an abatement, but not adding prop tax back on it, which.
Right. So now you're ta, yeah, you're taxing your, your, your developer or owner of the thing and the employees inside of it.
Yeah. So, yeah, that makes, but those are things that are asked, so. You know, if you really look at these calculations and assume nothing major changes, really the, the, the sweet, the sweet thing for a school district is seventy-five percent. But, that's assuming we still get the JED income tax. Obviously, without the JED income taxes, you know, obviously a hundred percent.
Right.
If House Bill one, two, three goes through, right now, there's no, nothing in the law that we've tried to get in there where they, there's any sharing requirement for the JED income tax. So we could lose that, you know, if that law goes into effect, you know, unless that township be willing to, to continue to share with us. Uh, the one, the one example we did have was the Canal Building, which was FedEx. It went for a fifty, a fifty percent abatement, and they didn't share the income tax with us at all. So we, you know, we're still giving a fifty percent of property taxes and not getting any JED revenue from that particular project whatsoever. They gave it, I think, I don't know. Somebody else got it, either that township kept it or. Um, and that's a really concern of mine, if this law goes into effect, give them more abatements, more property taxes, and not getting anything in, in, basically, in for it. So, you know, right now, I think it's. It just, kind of, seventy-five percent is a sweet. It, it can seem like we give up basically, um, because of the amount of property taxes. It all depends on the payroll and so forth.
So, we all heard that we, you know, the school lost a lot of money. The school lost a lot of money by not taking the first Canal. So if we just look at the numbers here, if we're looking at the numbers here on a twenty-five million dollar investment, a hundred percent tax abatement, we would give up the four point four million. Now, best scenario, if we had a six point five million payroll, we would regenerate, we'd get back one point one million. So four point four million versus one point one, huge difference. So then you kind of cross-reference that with, well, if we only give a fifty percent abatement, we're giving up two point two million. We're still getting two point two million. Which is more than the one point one seven million. And even if you take off the six hundred and fifty-two on the school foundation, we're still getting more than the one point one million. Which, and I understand all the different, there's all kinds of moving parts to it, and all the different things that go into the twenty-five and the seventy-five and that sort of thing. So when people keep saying that, we're losing money, we're losing money. Uh, no, we're not bleeding like everybody thinks that we're bleeding. Fifty percent abatement, we're still getting more than we would, a hundred percent abatement, in getting one point one million.
The big difference is, well, companies come in for fifty percent abatement, and that's, there's only been one, there's one or two, I think. You know, FedEx was able to, I think that's from Canal, but that's the hard, that's the balance, you know. If everybody came at fifty percent, it may be worth it to us not to, but you know, to let them go on, but.
And I think, my, yeah. My comment, I think back in the email, all public record. Is, if a company is, is wanting to come to the school district to say, we want a hundred percent abatement. Okay, I think, first of all, you know, we're, we're giving up four point four million. So, okay, we get the, all that payroll, let's say we're giving up three million now. We're still losing more than what is allowable by law, so why wouldn't the company come in and say, we know, we don't have to come to talk to you. We can just take a fifty percent abatement. You give up two point two million, you still keep two point two million. Why wouldn't they say, we want a hundred percent abatement, we know what the law is, two point two, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna up that for you. We're gonna give you the one point one seven, plus maybe something on your square footage, to even get you close to what your, the fifty percent by law is. That's just where my thought was. And I, like I said, we can back out of the school foundation. But the, the. The argument that we're losing millions and millions of dollars, we're losing millions and millions of dollars either way. It's just which way are we gonna lose them?
And gaining kids sometimes.
Right.
Right, and I think, yeah.
We've said before, however, however, it is better for us to, it, it is in the grand scheme of, of. The district, to bring the businesses in, even if we're at a fifty or seventy-five percent, or even a hundred percent abatement. Then it is a four hundred house housing development.
Exactly.
It is better.
I mean, and we still make money on the four hundred houses coming in, but we don't have the buildings.
Right, even if we're making housing, property tax on the four hundred housing, houses, housing development, it is better for us with the abatements to take the business.
And our history on passing for new buildings is what, thirty percent?
Yeah, it's, it's not good at all, so. Any kind of new levy, it's, it's been difficult, so. So kind of, you know, thinking we do have, you know, you know, we do have to, obviously, you know, there's another abatement coming up, coming up in January.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry, can we go back? Thirty percent is our, is our track record on passing a hundred percent abatements?
No.
No, no, no.
No.
Okay.
New levies.
New property taxes, yeah. Yeah, new property taxes.
I heard two different things. That's why I wanted to re-ask the question.
We've been, what, we've been a hundred percent on giving people abatements up until this very last one, and all it said was, give us a minute to.
Exactly.
Try to get some compensation for it. Try to have a conversation with us, is all we said.
That is all we said. Help us out.
Right. Because, I mean, to me, the facts on the ground are now this. I mean, going back into the history, you've said that Aetna needed. Some of the extra money to help with infrastructure or whatever. And we, being good citizens, we said, okay. So it took us forever to get back to where we started from. Well, I would argue, facts on the ground now, we have seven hundred new homes coming in in Reynoldsburg, thanks to some of what Aetna's been doing. So I don't find it unreasonable to ask for more than the thirty. Because the facts on the ground back then, we accommodated them. Facts on the ground right now, the present administration doesn't want to work or accommodate us. And I, to me, that's problematic, because if you scratch my back, if I'm scratching your back when I need my back scratched, I want someone there to scratch my back.
John has a lippy back.
There you go. Right, right?
I'm not scratching anybody's nails.
But, I just feel like, we have. But I just feel like, we have a great partnership with, with Potasca. And then you get this email this week, which again was public record, um, that, you know, they wanted us to make a decision on this abatement like now or, and I, I just don't think that's fair.
Right, and, and if I just tag on to that.
Please.
In January of this year, when we had the meeting with the attorneys for Skanel and Aetna Township, they demanded a hundred percent abatement on the second project. And then we heard nothing until the end of October. And, and that was, end of October, you've gotta get this done. Now, next meeting, pass it.
And that?
Yeah, I think that the hurry was more, uh, at the request of Aetna Township. It seems like Skanel was more willing to wait into the new year as long as we gave them a timeframe. It's something we would consider maybe at the January board meeting or something, uh, something like that. So it just seemed like, one, the township was trying to push us or not. And, you know, I am looking for, you know, Mr. Evans is here, is hopefully a better. Oh, yeah, I didn't see you back to me, how you doing? I am hoping for a better relationship with Aetna Township.
I am too, and I think that it's not unreasonable. I feel the voters spoke a few weeks ago. And I just don't feel like it would be good to go into any sort of abatement until who the voters spoke up for are there to talk to us.
And maybe once they're brought in the office, maybe we can schedule a meeting and a couple of them, meet with them, get your thoughts on where we're at.
That would be a great first step. I'd love to see us to get where we are with Potasca, you know? If we could get that way with them. But I just, you know, you just can't ask people to give extra money and they give extra money. And then all of a sudden, we don't have a reality of these seven hundred kids from Reynoldsburg coming in and we're just expected to take what we've always taken. And that, sorry, it's just not right. So to me, the facts on the ground have changed enough that I know we've wanted to get back to thirty. But they're now adding all these homes on top of it and I, I don't know. That's where I am with this.
Anybody else, or?
A hundred percent, I think you should, uh, this needs discussion, or Skanel will definitely be a common decision.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think, I, I kind of read between the lines too on the email that Skanel was more than willing to wait. And I think they should, I think that, that.
It's doing right by the voters.
It's doing right by the voters, yeah, and the new administration coming in.
The only thing maybe if we're looking at more than thirty percent, then we're gonna have that conversation with that township pretty quick after the first year. Cause our first meeting has to be before the fifteenth.
Right.
Right, and that's the thing, I don't know what their realities are. But I can tell from past behaviors, their realities can't be too bad because they've just suspended their road tax.
Well, yeah, that's after they made us go down to the twenty-five percent because they needed infrastructure.
Right. So, that's what I'm, I just, you know, you can't pee on my leg and tell me it's raining. It's just not gonna work.
Let's go back to the back scratching.
All right. So anyway, that's.
Johnisms.
Yes, I got quite a few tonight. So I, is this given, is, have we given you the direction that you need or do you need more clarification? Where are you in this?
I think, uh, at this point, after the first year, it would be nice to get the, at least the finance committee, whoever, our new finance committee. Problem is, I don't know if we can get together before, we won't know our, our new one. We could probably go with the old one in January or we've seen Skanel can push off till February.
Well, we could do it before, but I, I mean, I'd also like to have some kind of conversation with Skanel on what are they, how bad do they want that hundred percent?
Yeah, and I can, we can schedule a meeting with Skanel as a finance committee and I would also like to schedule a meeting with at least two township trustees. Hopefully, and just, just talk and kind of give it the history and, uh, I think if it's two township trustees though, it may be a, a meeting, so you can only do one probably.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause you guys should be a quorum for you two, yeah.
Yeah, it'd have to be after the first, but only be one trustee.
Unless, unless we meet as a meeting, if we go to a meeting and talk about it, but.
Right.
That's up to them.
Right.
Well.
I.
But you certainly got the old finance committee.
Yeah, we can, yes, yes.
In December or early January, right?
I'm fine with the January discussion, I think that's doing right by Skanel.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and I'm fine with, you know, if you guys are fine with Deb and I, keep on with this.
Am I me? Yeah, it's fine. I was gonna say, okay, who are we kidding? Like, we really don't know the finance committee. I'm pretty good with that.
So, I don't know when the new Aetna trustees are sworn in, do you guys know yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
Before, uh, January first, we have to be sworn in.
Oh, are you sworn in that quick, okay.
Okay. So maybe we could send out an invitation or you guys could be in contact and we could set up a meeting of some sort. Even if we have to meet with you one hour and then you the next hour, whatever. I think that would be good. And even Mr. Johnson, I've never talked to him either. But, um, you know, I just, I think it will be, it will be good, so.
You guys okay with a meeting sometime? So congratulations both you two also, looking forward to it.
And that will probably be then before the fifteenth, then the, we would do that, somewhere between the first and the fifteenth.
I think the thirteenth is the first Thursday, second Thursday or something like that, so somewhere around there, it's gotta be, yeah, so. Once we, once we set up in December, then we can reach out to them once they know and then schedule a meeting.
However, with that said, we could meet with Skanel at any time.
Yes.
Don't we normally do our org meeting before, like, we do our regular on the same day, so we're not coming back the next week?
Yeah, we've done it both ways.
I know we have, but lately.
Lately, we've done the same night, yeah, the org meeting and then followed by the regular meeting, so you don't have to come back.
All right. Do you have enough direction?
Yeah, I think so, yeah, I'm good.
Any other discussion? All right, then let's move on to donations.
You could probably take A through, A through C if you want to.
Okay.
Motion to approve nine A through C? Second.
Okay.
Donations, we always appreciate those, um, thank you. Again, we have a couple additional statements of purposes as they come in. Kind of the five-year forecast, I'll try to go through it quickly. So basically overall, our fo- five-year forecast looks good. We are still projecting negative cash flow starting in two thousand twenty-five and twenty-six. One, the, the big, the really big number in there is school foundation, where it comes in between unrestricted and restricted. Uh, I projected basically being flat, you know? And the problem with this new school foundation from them is they only approved two years. And there's no guarantee it will be fully implemented, implemented over the seven-year period. So, you know, in the five-year forecast, I'm just flatlining it for now. I'm hoping to receive additional funds with our continued growth in the school district. But, I said, I'd rather go with what I know than hoping. So, it's pretty well flatlined. Overall, again, you know, we got additional staffing in there, we have, I think, nine additional teachers next year. Especially when we go back to kids being in basically K-three buildings. So it's basically three of those additional are for art, music, PE and ability, cause we don't, we don't have it. And then I think there's additional EL teacher in there and then we have five for growth. And that's one thing we can't control is how many kids come in. And so, five is great, you know, Dr. Perkins has done a good job of trying to stay within that number. But again, the kids come in, we can't, we don't have a choice. So, so in twenty-three, we have a, a number of nine teachers and then each year after that, we have five. And really, it's mainly for just growth, kids coming in. Everything else, you know, insurance-wise, budget attempts to increase, salary increases, what's in negotiated agreement? Two and a half, then two and a quarter, two and a quarter, then went back two and a half, two and a half, the last two years, the forecast. So, unless you have specifics, I mean, right now, we're doing well. We're still projecting a positive cash flow in the next, this year and two additional years, and then we start going negative a little bit. So as we keep track of what's going on, you know, try to minimize staffing as much as possible. But we do, obviously, we have to keep providing our kids with opportunities. So, um, I asked the board to approve the five-year forecast and authorized me to submit it to ODE for, by November thirtieth. But if you have any specific questions, I can answer those.
I don't have any.
I know.
Me neither.
No questions, but I just wanna tell you both that you're, that you're doing a good job with this because we've, you've, several times in the past, you've told us we're gonna be in a negative cash flow much earlier. And we're not, we're still not there yet. So, I, you both are doing a really good job with that and we really appreciate it.
It's hard to keep running lines.
You were buying all those purses, aren't you? Go to the bingo.
I heard that fundraiser, yeah.
There you go.
No, I mean, this is important document, it's a guide for us. And if we can stay within it, good, but, you know, we can't control a lot of it. So, this forecast is good today. Thing to change tomorrow, but.
But it's still, it's nice when you, when, you know, when it was, you know, two years ago, it was twenty, twenty-one.
Right.
It was gonna be negative and now it's twenty-five, twenty-five. That's good, that's a good day.
We're controlling our expenditures as best we can, so.
All right. We're in statements of purpose, I see there's an.
We have to vote on that, don't we?
Yeah, we have to vote on all of them. I just wanted to talk about C real fast. The Aetna yearbook, um, are they doing a yearbook for Aetna this year? I see she's gone now, but. I didn't know with the schools being combined if they were actually, they are, okay. All right.
Usually those run through the PTO, what they're gonna do.
They did last year for intermediate school.
Okay.
Even though they were half-year one school and half-year the other.
What, I think you more meant, cause they're combined, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So they're like hard S over here.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
But I think they're probably still able to get Aetna classes, Aetna events, you know?
All right, I was just curious. Obviously, they need a yearbook, it was just quirky question. Okay, Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Zini.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes, that passes, we'll move on to superintendent items.
So I gave you guys our most recent enrollment. You're gonna see, um, still a steady increase in kids. We're up seventy-six, um, students from August. So, um, we're, we're a little, we're a little tight at some of our elementary classrooms, we're sitting with very few openings, um, left in there. And not that much space, which, um, I know we've kind of talked about in other avenues, but not in a board meeting. So we will be ringing, um, sooner than later, I would say it's in the next two months, uh, you know, hopefully two months. An updated master plan, we're working with Garmin and Miller on that. Kind of looking at a ten-year projection of growth of the buildings. In the meantime, we're working on, obviously, the plans for the new elementary. We're now, um, going to have them take a look at what it would cost to have eight classrooms per grade level instead of six. We're, we're just growing and growing and a lot of times it's hitting at the elementary level. And I thi- I, I fear at the rate this is going, we're not gonna have any rooms open. And we already are building those beyond the initial capacity with those six rooms. So, we're gonna look at costs for what it will be like to make that, um, new elementary larger, since we're going to build it anyways. It's kind of in the center of the district, so it'd be a good way to poll from both sides. So we'll see what that boils down to cost-wise. So we'll, we'll be bringing that to you to talk about, we'll have the master plan presentation, so you can kind of take a look at what we're looking at numbers-wise. There are also, when, um, they're doing that, they're looking at the numbers, um, from cooperative strategy as well, their projections. They're using a lot of different variables to, um, help make up that plan. So I think that'll be good for us to continue to follow. And then each year, we'll be able to look at that, look at the updates from cooperative strategies and continue to hopefully have a, you know, a projected plan for when we absolutely are gonna have to, you know, start talking about additional buildings. Or, and/or the addition on the high school or opportunities like that. So, any questions on the growth or classrooms or, you wanna add anything to that, Rick?
So basically, I think it's gonna cost more money.
Well, yeah. Okay, I was leaving that part out of that.
That's the catchphrase here, but, um.
You're really dug deep there, Rick.
But the problem is, this, we don't have the money. So, you know, we're ba- we might have to basically look into o- other options or maybe even pull some from the general fund. A one-time expansion, it'd kill us, um, but it may be a couple million dollars. So, a million or two, it just depends on how everything shakes out. So, um, it's something we're looking into and seeing and kind of see where it comes out. Hopefully by the time we have some of the buildings closed out, know where we're really running for five high school. And then hopefully Aetna will be closed out and then getting closer to the high school, middle school renovation being complete. So maybe there's some revenue there that we haven't spent that can be moved towards a new building. But, you know, I think cops-wise, tans-wise, I think we're pretty much P-I-Y is, we're pretty much as tight as we can get. Obviously, you know, if, if more abatements come in, we can maybe look at that in the future. But, um, but I think it's, I agree, it's, it's, it's gonna be a requirement, you know? I think we were talking about, recently, we talked about going to eight as we were talking about Kirkesville, was, which the master plan was like three hundred and fifty was gonna be designed for and there's gonna be four hundred and seventy-seven kids in there after Aetna kids leave. It's still gonna be oversized.
Which is why I said our realities on the ground have changed significantly.
I think we need to go ahead and build four cla- six classrooms per, or eight classrooms per grade. That put that building, about eight hundred kids at middle school, I mean, a K-three building. But, I mean, pre- future additions like high school, that's all going to require a bond issue. I mean, there's, there's no, the reality of fact is, is, you know, we are spending money, but we're trying to get these buildings done right the first time. I don't wanna short, you know, we're a little short a little bit, so we're gonna shortchange it, no, we're trying to do it right. And hopefully as they look back on it, we've done these buildings right. And that's what we're trying to do as a board and as an administration.
And not only that, but doing them on dollars from four years ago.
Exactly.
And since COVID, construction is not cheap.
No. So, there, we're gonna be definite, you know, where the extra money is gonna come for, for the new K-three. But I think it's almost like a requirement, we need to do it, this is gonna be sized, that gives us a chance. I mean, it's gonna be two years, three years, if that one's done yet.
While twenty twenty-four?
Yeah, twenty twenty-four, so it's gonna be like three years from now or jock. So, what's our enrollment gonna be then, you know?
Right.
So, it'll, more to come, more to share, but those are the things we're looking at as we try to plan for now and then for the future as well, so. And we need to start having those conversations and communicating that with the community as well, so they know what we're looking at. Once we get that master plan and that can show that growth, that's something we can, um, you know, share as well. Modified version. Any other questions on that or thoughts? And then the other thing I gave you was, um, kind of, just a, I wanted you to see. Um, I know we had talked about kind of what this would look like, um, and how it would maybe be different for, you know, typically, for those that don't know, the subs are, um, hired by the county. Um, and so then the county, you know, does training and takes care of all that. So, the county's not hiring, um, the new subs under the new credentials, we're doing that ourselves. So, um, we put together a, a substitute training. This gives you an idea of all the things they're going over, um, in their training, um, to make sure that they, you know, feel, um, actually probably even more prepared, honestly, than some of our subs who have gone through, the county that doesn't know the ins and outs of our school district. And, you know, so Tanya working with the coaches, this is, this is pretty amazing. And, and we currently have thirty-seven people signed up to be teacher subs. So, um, they have trainings each week. Uh, the first one last Friday, we had ten and then they're staggered in the next couple of weeks. So, um, this is a really great opportunity to bring on a lot of people. And, um, a good chunk of these subs, I wanna say ten to twelve, have also agreed to sub for classified positions. So if there maybe wasn't availability for teaching, they would jump into classified. And that job fair did bring on, um, some sub custodians, some more sub, um, career professionals, some cooks, which Cindy desperately needed. So, um, it, you know, we were able to get additional staffing as well. So Pam is working on that, I'm getting those people hired and all the paperwork submitted. But I would say the biggest positive is the thirty-seven teacher subs. Even if half of them sub consistently, that would be.
Make a big impact.
It would make a huge impact. And I think that the teachers would be very appreciative of that. So, um, I think this is great, I wanted to share what they've put together, cause I think they've done a fantastic job in hoping to really make sure people feel prepared. Especially if you've never been, you know, in a classroom before. Um, that's a completely different experience, so, um, wanna share that as well, and that's it for me.
Okay. It appears we are out of agenda items, so it's time for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Zini.
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned at eight-ten.